Okay. We're good? All right, let's start with the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, February twenty eighth, it's five P M. And this is the the regular meeting of the planning board. And there are three of us here, so we have a quorum, Larry, Green, myself, and Ron Reed. And it's a short agenda today, which is nice. Did you guys get a chance to look at the minutes?
Yep.
You want to vote in favor?
So second.
Okay. All those who've ever.
Hi.
You know, that was Ron. Moving and seconded by Larry. I assume there's no public comments, why don't we just move move right ahead to the public hearing for Gene Kane and Paul Zakowski, three twenty-five and three twenty-seven Division Street. Thank you, we need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Larry, seconded by Ron, all those in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, so I'm here, sorry, just.
Okay, hello, Kay.
Very nice.
Okay, votes with us now as well, good, so the public hearing is open. And you missed nothing, okay, we just we just the flag salute.
Thank you, sorry.
Just again, no, not at all. Okay, so it's an open public hearing, representatives are here, I can barely see you, but. Neither. You.
So I would have them come up and just re- reintroduce the project just for the hearing.
Yep. Want to do that? You introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, Doug Malturno, attorney for the applicant, and the applicant is present this evening as well. It's a lot line modification transferring approximately ten thousand square feet of the fly hole from the fly hole lot to the waterway lot.
Yeah, you were here a month ago.
We were here a month ago.
And we discussed some things and trying to remember exactly what what we sent.
There was a shed that was.
That's right.
Removed, which has been completed.
Okay.
Doris requested confirmation that public utilities are available, P C G and Sub County Water Authority. They're all available.
It's all fine, correct?
Yep.
There's no, there's no services on the back property now, am I correct about that?
Yeah. But there's, we twelve approved lots already on Montauk Avenue.
Right.
All right.
Right, right, okay. Kathy, any comments about this particular application?
Just that this was the purchase of a county planning commission and a letter of local determination for us to send back. So they don't have an interest in this application. And the Harvard committee provided a recommendation that the application is consistent or at least not inconsistent with the L W R K.
Fine, good. Lastly, what's the secret process, Kathy, we have to.
Yes. So the applicant has completed the part one E A F. And this this board, we on your behalf, Nelson Pope and we're on your behalf, prepared the part two, which you have in front of you. And that contains eleven questions. That neither as the fill out, no small impact measure or a moderate to large impact measure. And that is what sugars, you know, how do you how do you move forward with secret? So we just going through those, if you could quickly just go through those. Good process for the planning board to do.
Yep.
The first has to do with the business action in conflict with the system land use regulations for the comprehensive plan. And I guess I could answer for you, but if you have any comments.
No, yeah.
No, that there is no impact there. Is there a result, would the action result in a change in the intensity of use? In that case, in this case, no, because there's not going to change the number of homes that can be built here. You're really just relocating, you're just reallocating the strip of land which would have been the flag law portion to get to this lot two, two lot one. And actually, it's a better design, you're not going to have cars going in and out there. Those cars will now enter on Montauk Avenue. Will it impact the character or quality of this existing community? Also, no. Will it result in, is there any impact on a critical environmental area? No. And stop me if you have any questions.
Let me ask you about that.
Yes.
The establishment of a critical environmental area?
Yes.
There isn't one there.
There isn't one, so it really should be an A.
Okay, got it.
Um, the adverse impact or a change in the level of traffic, mass transit biking or walkway, you know? Will it result in an increase in use of energy? Or and incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities, no? Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or publicly private waste water facilities? Also, no. Will the proposed action appear to quality by character of quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources, no? The next one, number nine, has to do with natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality for fauna. Also, no. Number ten, will it result in increased water potential for erosion flooding or drainage issues? And then finally, will this proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources? If the board agrees with this, our our assessment, then it would be a free, there's no reason to be in part free. And the board could adopt a negative.
Okay, and and I suppose we need to adopt a negative declaration in order for this to proceed, I'm assuming, right? And just for you, the board members to know, Kathy and I just speak about this this process earlier. It seems on this particular application, all this is pretty evident that there knows. But there is an interest in in the village administration that and and Liz is interested in having us more specifically look at the questions and and hear them out loud for for the secret review process. So it's a good habit to get into.
Yes, it's your findings, it's your determination as board, right? You're the ones doing secret, adopting this determination. So anytime, you know, Nelson Pope will always prepare for you, but if at any time you don't agree with them, you can make your own findings as to why you don't agree or what, you know, additional information you want to provide. And ultimately, it's your responsibility, so you always have to be to go through it.
Good, thank you for that, but and it is good form to just sort of get in the habit of doing it. Get us used to doing it, so that's good, thank you. Okay, so I think what we need to do now, we could, we could, if I could entertain a motion to.
Public hearing.
Well, we have to hear the public.
We should, we should hear. Okay, I mean, you should, we're in the middle of the public hearing, we should hear from the public, and then after they can close the public hearing and adopt a resolution.
Right. Thank you, okay, so we're in a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public who wants, and maybe there's someone online, I don't really know, who wants to comment on this particular application? I don't think there's anyone online, is there, or what I would know probably.
Yeah.
So it looks like there's no one here, all right, so let's, I'll take an interesting motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Kay, all those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so the public hearing is closed. And now we need to, if I understand correctly, we need to entertain a motion to adopt a negative declaration.
Okay.
Is that right?
Yeah, that's fine.
So a motion, please, to adopt a negative declaration? Or to adopt a negative, yes, negative declaration, thank you, Ron, seconded.
Second.
Thank you, Larry, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Good, thank you. A formality, but need to do it, thank you. Okay, so the public hearing is closed, we have a negative declaration on secret. Are there any outstanding issues that we should be talking about?
You're prepare a resolution for the next hearing, right? I can do that, yes.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. All right, do you need us to vote on that? Wonderful, good.
Thank you.
Pretty clean up, yeah.
So they'll prepare a resolution for the next.
Right.
For the conditions. Only that's your signs of the actual sub- passion of the house.
Good, thank you. Good, so they'll be, they'll come back to us next month, right?
You could record these meetings, April twenty fifth. March.
It's the twenty first, right, right, okay.
Ninety-eight.
Twenty-eight. Okay, good. All right, let's move forward a little bit. There are a couple of things, Kay, I wanted to bring, there's a couple of things I wanted to mention before we close this out, I know there's something else on the agenda, but I want one is there's another local law that was, Paul and others, we're done with you, so you can stay if you want to, but.
Who do I see about getting paid for this transfer? Do I talk to my lawyer or my wife about that? Or have you helped with that?
Talk to your wife, that's always the right answer, just talk to your wife.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for holding the meeting for just this one item.
Of course, of course. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So long. There's a new local law that, and maybe you can just explain this to the guys a little bit, which Kathy and I spoke about it. Local law amending three hundred, check with three hundred zoning. I think it happened two weeks ago or something like that, and it's regarding site plan applications.
Oh, for pre-submission?
Pre-submission.
Okay, so this is, this local law creates a new pre-submission conference provision for site planning view for your board. And and for special permit review as well, so what that means is when an application comes in, you will have a pre-submission conference, which was already in the code, but it changes the conference to be a public hearing. So it allows you to hear from the public on an application from the very beginning. And this is in response to some of the concerns the public has had with reviewing certain applications, they don't want to wait for that public hearing process to happen later on, they want to weigh in almost before you do secret too. So, you know, and that is one of the, one of the components of secret is hearing public interest in what the public thinks about an application as well, so it will help inform, secret will help inform the applicant, because Kathy will do a review, a planning review, a pre-submission report, which will outline all of the issues with that particular application, and it will also allow the applicant to hear from the public. And to allow the board to hear from the public right away, so that's the goal of that local law.
So that pre-submission report is presented ahead of time before the meeting, we would see it before the meeting.
No, first what they do is they submit an application.
They submit.
Have your conference, your pre-submission conference, and what that would do is you would have a public hearing. And then she gets to write the report, I believe.
The pre-submission conference is is the public hearing or is it a separate?
It's a public hearing, exactly.
So it's a public hearing, in which we, which the the proposal, the application is discussed at the earliest stage.
Right.
And the public can weigh in on it at that point in time. I think that's actually a good change, because after, I don't know, thirteen or fourteen years of doing this, anything that's at all controversial, people are anxious to to talk about it, but the way we've been doing it, it's delayed. And they're frustrated by that.
Very frustrated.
And we know that, because they say to us, can we get up and speak about it? We said, no, not until the public hear.
And and it has been, has been noticed, is that correct? Because of the public hearing. Okay, okay.
So it's just to get more public input right away, rather than waiting.
Well, it's also probably, hopefully, if it all goes well, but hopefully better for the applicant. Because then the applicant doesn't go through the whole process, because that's expensive with a finished plan ready to go, and then there's a lot of comments at the end.
Exactly.
This way, hopefully, it's it's better for everybody.
Right, right.
Correct.
And if I read it correctly, the law, I mean, the those site plans which require a special exception permit or permit would might go to the, not come to us, but if it needs to go to a special exception, first it would go to.
So only, no, only when the Board of Trustees has retained jurisdiction over a special exception permit use.
Okay.
Would it go to the Village Board of Trustees for that pre-submission conference? Also, only on those three instances, there's three times when they retain that jurisdiction, which is over telecommunications, which is already in the code.
Yeah.
The waterfront overlay district for structures over thirty-five hundred square feet. Or the affordable housing in V B or O D.
Okay.
Three instances, it would go to your village board.
Everything else would come here.
Everything else would come here.
Okay. Nice change.
And there and there are certain parameters, it's not for minor applications, it's for those larger applications, if you look at the law. There are certain parameters for those applications that would that would trigger this review.
Fantastic, great, yeah, I thought it was important for us to hear and to hear from you, because you.
Can I just understand like what what minor application it would be triggered?
So I.
Somebody was putting a little addition to their house to decorate their home.
When I sent it to you earlier, John.
Yeah, I can read it later, I just, I printed out just two pages of it.
As a list.
But I don't think it includes that list, it's on the back page as well, it's five pages long.
All the local laws are listed on the website. So I'm just going to try and pull it up, just bear with me.
Good luck, sure, sure.
It's not coming up, sorry. No. Well, I can certainly give you that information, I just, I don't have it in front of me right now, I apologize.
That's right.
I was just curious where the line was between the triggering, between minor.
Well, they're not, it's not defining a new one, no, this is the other one, sorry, it's not coming up.
I do have it.
You do, it's it's not defining like minor versus major, it just has a list of certain triggers for applications, like if it's over a certain size. If it's clearing more than a certain area of land.
I see.
It's in there. Yes. Okay, special exceptions, construction replacement of any new non-residential building structure, including an accessory building or structure. It can be, it might be quite expensive, I mean, so it's not any non-residential, you know, structures that would come in.
This is all non-residential.
It, most of it, yes, yes, it's non-residential.
There is one related to multifamily buildings, so the conversion of existing residential structure that has one or two dwelling units for a multifamily, that's one that would large apartment areas, two thousand square feet or more. Land disturbances involving two thousand square feet or greater. And then excluded are application of, there's certain items that are excluded that were already approved within five years of this, of the day. Including use variances and changes in zone. And emergency service related applications. And type two actions, those would be some of those minor actions.
Can you mention about accessory use dwellings? So everybody that wants to put in accessory use in the.
No, I don't think that's the goal, the goal.
Non-residential.
Yeah, non-residential.
Okay, so, okay. That's what I'm declaring, I just.
Yes.
I just had the sense that we were going to have. You know, every application that comes to the building, it's going to end up here.
Hmm. All right, cool, good.
Thanks.
Thank you, we'll we'll take as it comes with that.
And all for the ones, well, we.
Yeah, yeah.
Are there local law to that, the waterfront overlay district one? No, now that.
Well, that, that's the one I think you just handed, yeah, that's the Doris, right?
Those three local laws.
The local laws that are.
There should be another.
Coming up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's one set for public hearing for March.
Right, right, and while we talk about that, since we're here, that that is well, I haven't, I haven't looked at it so closely, but it's.
I need copies of them, I'm sorry, thanks. It's really hard to talk about it. So I wrote, you know, you write it like, and then you distribute them, so that one, oh, there's a clearing law, and then there's also a change to the waterfront overlay district standard, so the first one, let's talk about the waterfront overlay district. This one is a local law that will amend the definition of a waterfront lot. And it changes it to include those lots that are budding in easement, private rail, private access, driveway or flag that also about a water volume.
Is this only in the office district? Is that only in the office district?
It's in the waterfront overlay district.
That's it, okay.
So it's only there, and it also eliminates the height, which the height was limited to for structures on waterfront lots in waterfront overlay district, it limits the height to twenty-five feet. So that's the height, it used to be thirty-five feet if you could get the accessway to the water, there was a provision that allowed the village board to allow that, but in this case, now it's going to just limit all waterfront lots in the waterfront overlay district to twenty-five feet in height.
Does that.
For structures.
Does that mean it eliminates the option of a of a accessway in front of these buildings?
Yeah, it does, it eliminates that give and take. It was in order to get, in order to get the higher height, there was a trade-off to get the access to the water, that was the goal.
Okay.
In this case, it takes, it removes that from the law.
And and the purpose of doing this is to.
To reduce the potential for heights, as heights of structures.
Again, as has happened in the past, and so it would not happen again, is that the idea?
That's the idea.
Okay.
Well, I think.
For access.
The trade-off is gone, it would be eliminating that that trade-off, yeah.
Yeah.
So how do we deal with the access?
That goes away.
I'm guessing that's just getting the reduced height of the structure.
So all that, okay, I will get it, okay, fine.
So this, this, this is a, this is a mending law that just was brought into play, but was actually written maybe a year or two ago.
Right, correct, correct.
So, all right, so, yes. That, that whole discussion about increasing access to the waterfront sort of disappears with this.
Well, I think it's a trade-off.
Right.
That was, yes, that was at the discretion of the village board.
Plus, like, it's not to say that if an applicant came with a proposed plan, we couldn't ask them to put in access. It's just that they're not going to be entitled to a bonus as a result.
Right. Right. Okay, and that, that's up, that's not passed yet, that's up for.
That's on for a public hearing, and the next one.
Okay.
You guys, you know, you can always weigh in, you can always give a referral resolution if you'd like, or, you know, certainly with your opinion as a board, if you'd like to do that, you can.
Right.
I always prefer that you do that in a resolution rather than going individually to the meeting, because, you know, individually, you're individual board members, but obviously, together, if you pass a resolution, that's the thing.
Right, right. Thank you, okay.
There's another one, clearing.
Oh, right, yeah, let's do that.
Post-clearing law, and this is a pretty extensive, this is on for March fourteenth, public hearing for the village board. And this is also amending zoning code to create a clearing law. There's a section in the code already in their three hundred dash nine point one-one. It's called supplemental use and dimensional regulations, and it had a section on clearing. But this is, creates an actual extensive clearing code. So if you could take the time to look at that, it sets up minimum lot clearing percentages for the sizes of lots. It talks about clearing restrictions and and it outlines a more thorough code for that, for the village.
And who, like, who came up with that?
So this was, this, there were.
A consultant that came up with the, like, the guidelines for the clearing restrictions?
No, so, so this was originally worked on, I think, by our Nelson Pope and Warkeys as our consultants, and I think they even did a clearing study or something. Yes, but, yeah, and it's been morphed out of of that as well, so. That's, it's originally come from actual constituents or residents of the village.
Interesting, because like, it's in a, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole, but for example, the lot that the house I own in Redwood has some big trees on it, and previously, there are no clearing restrictions. If you add those in, it it's, you know, presents some challenges for a homeowner if they want to renovate or put in a pool or whatever. And then you have some somewhat, can be somewhat arbitrary and constraining decisions on what trees, you know, you have to keep and what you can get rid of.
So the process is, it would be submitted to the building department.
Right.
With your building permit, and the building inspector would do a first cursory review of this application, which would also include a survey indicating the current clearing on site. Obviously, if your property is already entirely cleared, that would be something that would be grabbed as law, and then what would happen is if he felt additional review was required at his discretion, he would send it to the A R B for review, that's the process. And and you're right, I'm sure there will be homeowner concerns with regard to this proposed law as well that will be raised at the public hearing.
I just think it can be very onerous on a property owner to comply with those, especially with the village, with the size of the lots in the village and the age of some of the trees. And some of those trees, you know, it's, if a tree falls down in a storm, it can cause significant damage to your house. And I think, you know, I just, I just put it out there for other people kind of commenting on this, that, you know, all is well and good for A R B or building inspector to say, well, that tree should stay, but there's a balance between property owner rights and other rights as well, I just put that out there.
So, so I understand how the the process would work, so say, say someone buys a house. Say I buy a house, and it's maybe it's a little bit disheveled and been overgrown from years of not being tended to so well, so you may have a nice tree in the wrong location, say, or to to Kate's point, like, maybe a large tree that's kind of too close to the foundation than one might want, how would one do if it's over, if it's a caliper, it's a size big enough caliper that's supposed to be protected, and the tree's not ill, how do you, what do you, what's the process of reviewing that?
Well, one of the earlier iterations of this local law did have a caliper section where it was talking about mature trees and a certain sized tree, that that was removed from this local law, and basically.
Okay.
Yeah, basically, it doesn't go by one particular sized tree, so it's, 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 it's not exactly like North Haven just passed, I don't know if they passed it, they're contemplating a clearing law, and they're doing individual trees, but that's a different, you know, it's a different place where
Yeah.
They don't have a downtown, they don't have a village district, village business district, so, and their lots maybe aren't as small and cleared already. So this is more dealing with percentages, and and I think it will have to do with discretion of the building inspector, and certainly, you know, a property owner will be able to deal with the building inspector on such terms.
So the buck stops with the building inspector?
At at first glance, yes, and then if necessary, it goes to A R B, if it follows this discretion.
I just think it's, it's a, no, it's not, not a great, it's not a great thing, and it's not just someone buying a property, it's, you already own it, like, John, your property on Hampton Street, you have a lot of trees there, if you wanted to put a pool in, I'm just, you know, it's.
You know, I have, I have a a third of an acre lot, and in the backyard, I have trees overhanging from my neighbor. I have big trees that weren't that big thirty years ago when I bought the house, but they're big now. And there's a lot of shade so much, so I can't even grow grass back there anymore.
Yeah, it's a real, it's, it's not, it's, to me, this isn't a no-brainer law. We might want to leave a comment to the board about it.
Yeah, I write when you guys read through it, and then if you feel like you'd like to, you can, you know, we can draft a resolution for you, Kathy can help too, or. And then if you feel like you'd like to, you can, you know, we can draft a resolution for you. Kathy can help too, or, you know, we can draft something on your behalf, or you can, you can draft it yourselves. It's up to you, and then you can send it to the, to the village board.
When is, when is, when is the board, when's the public hearing on this?
The first public hearing will be March 14th.
Okay.
I mean, that's literally a law that affects every lot owner in the village of Sag Harbor. This isn't like a waterfront overlay 20, 35 to 25 feet change. This is a very significant impact on, on local residents as well as people that are there part of the year.
Up to 10,000 square feet, you can have 100% of your lot cleared, so.
Okay.
It's not, you know, you should take a look at it, and, and then absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Okay, I totally hear you, Kay. And thank you, Liz.
Yeah.
Thanks, Liz.
I, I agree with you. I think we should probably, but we, we all have to read it, obviously.
Read it, talk about it a little more.
So in order to do this, we'll have to reconvene virtually or something, or, or, or you can just send your comments to me. This is happening in two weeks, two and a half weeks, or something like that, before our next meeting. So if we want to send a, a resolution to the board trustees, we'll need to get our act together over the course of the next week or so, I think, to submit a letter.
If you wanted, I mean, for the public hearing opens, but I, I anticipate this actually going for more than just one public hearing.
You do.
We never know, but I, I would think so. I don't know. But if you wanna do it in time, for sure, then.
So it's possible you're saying we could, at the next meeting of ours here.
This will be, this will be more than just one public hearing. It's possible that it will take two years.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, it, it seems very problematic to me.
Yeah. Well, why don't, why don't we all read, I, if, my suggestion, but I'll hear any suggestions from you, but it sounds like if we all read it and then sort of get back, communicate with each other by email and such, then we can figure out next steps.
Yeah.
That we might wanna do. Is that good for you, Kay?
That's great.
Yeah?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, good. And if, if on first glance, we're, we're really wanting to, I guess, what we, we could send a letter to the board saying we intend to like discuss this further at our next meeting, just FYI, board trustees. We'll come back to you with a, with a resolution or something.
Yeah, I'll just also voice my opinion about the act water access elimination. I don't, I don't, you know, I would rather not see that happen. I'd rather see that, make sure that those developments are allow access to the waters.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hear you. It's just like a trade-off. They're, they're saying before when we, and you were on that, on those calls with me, I remember that was part of that over, overlay district plan. And the thought was permit a bonus height if you, if the developer would allow access to the water for the public to connect some of those properties.
Yep.
But at the same time, if, you know, if, if.
Well, I think it was reasonable that before where you could have the trade-off that you'd be at 25, and then the, that above 25 would have to step back 10 feet off the street front.
I mean, I think that's still potentially an option. It's just not gonna be in the code, and they won't get 35 feet. But I mean, I hear you. It's just, it's, it's, you know, it's like a some, that's a complicated.
My, my reaction is just to kind of just going against everything we worked for about accessing U-Shed to the waterfront.
Well, I, I, I agree with you, but I tend to personally agree with you about that, but I had the same reaction when I heard that access to the waterfront was being potentially curtailed, or, or options for increasing access to waterfront, which Kathy, as I meant, is, is sort of fundamental of the LWRP.
Exactly.
So.
Yeah, we could comment on that.
Right.
To comment on it to the board as they're looking at this change. And, and it's, it's, you're, you know, you're right, Ron, and.
In process, Kathy, explain process to me. By, by, this is, this would, this law would be in action by the board of trustees, which would require LWRP, or, I mean, I'm sorry, secret review. And they would have to go through that list, and that would have to tick off if you're taking away, you take, it, it is, and it is restricting. Right?
It's removing that provision that would have allowed for access with, as, as a trade-off, correct?
So it's curtailling the possibility of public access potential.
So, yeah, this would be, this would be referred to the Harvard committee as well. I don't think, I don't know that it'll make it on in time for their meeting this month. Because it's weak.
So, can we, can we define public access?
So.
Both literally and what it implies. What I mean is this. You know, in the grandiose scheme of things that people would wish for, which is to have a boardwalk along the waterfront. And which may or may not happen eventually to the degree some people wish it could be. Access actually means access to the waterfront. Not just a view.
That, that's what that was defined as. That it would imply public access via private property. Actual improved walkway to get from the, the street across the property to the waterfront.
So it's essentially an easement.
Yeah.
And how wide is?
The legal word is, it really would be though, public access be over private property.
What, how wide is pub, is a public ask, access legally need to be?
I don't remember offhand. Was it CP?
It was something like that. It, it was something like that.
I don't have the law coming.
So is, is it literally just defines like a, a corridor between the street going, going, but not along the edge of the waterfront?
That's the way it was defined.
It was a court.
It was access through the property to get to the waterfront and improving that as part of the provisions of the code.
So it, it could, in theory, be 15 feet wide in total of the waterfront edge, as opposed, so it's not perpendicular to the waterfronts, or it's perpendicular, not parallel to the waterfront?
Right. It was, it was to gain access from a public right of way across private property to the waterfront.
I see, okay.
So.
But it was discretionary. It was not a requirement of the code. It was absolutely discretionary.
Yeah.
Right. Incentivized by the ability to.
To go up.
Go up.
Right, exactly.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So what you missed, Liz, the, the question came up is whether, whether this needs recommendation in Harvard committee, and that, that is so, yeah, but their meeting this week, I don't know if they'll, if it'll get on their agenda.
Well, that depends on you guys now.
Okay, so, uh,
Bye.
Yeah.
For both of these issues, I, I suggest that we, we board members sort of do our reading over the next couple of days. And then I'll, I'll email you all and see if you have any comments, and and then we'll, we'll consider next steps of me may or may not wanna do. Either commenting to the board prior to this next meeting, or or waiting until next month and we clarify at the sport meeting, and hopefully the meeting of the board of trustees following, we'd be able to submit a letter if we wanted to.
I don't know if the other one will go to meetings, so I'd recommend you give your referrals before.
For which one's that?
For the waterfront overlay district.
Okay.
I don't know.
One, very quick. I don't know if it's legally possible or of interest to anyone. Could they just limit the height to 25 feet, but also request that there's some sort of access easement for the public?
I think that would require some research, because I think the reason it was a trade-off was because it's, there has to be.
Bonus.
Yeah. There was a bonus because there has to be an access to conditions that you require.
One, let, let's just, let's like try to create a hypothetical example. We're talking about properties that are on the waterfront, and we're talking about not empty property, but property which is, already exists that you may, a building that already exists that you may wanna change. If you, if you, if it's not a historically important building, you could actually tear it down and build a new building. This is an example. And that that new building, under the proposal, proposed limits could only be 25 feet high. And there's no even suggestion about public access. So how wide might one of these lots be? I'm just trying to get wrapped my head around the logistics of it. If it were 100 feet wide, let's say hypothetically, and you required 15 feet on one side of it, that's 50, that's 15% of the lot. And so that was sort of the trade-off, because you've got extra square footage on the third floor, right? So that's where that interplay was. And so at this point in time, the proposal is to eliminate even the, the trade-off, potential of the trade-off, and allow it to basically get to the setback lines on, on the side, each side.
Limiting it to 25. No deaths, no density increase for the.
Was there any study or any, any consulting done on this?
That's done by Nelson Pope and Warkeys, yes.
Did we in the waterfront district, was it still a zero lot, zero line? Zero lot line buildable area?
There, there was still a visual access that's required. There's still, that's still part of it. That hasn't been changed, no. So is it 20% of the lot width possibly, I don't know correctly, but.
So there's still sideline setbacks?
Okay, that's something.
Okay.
Right. All right, let's do our reading on, on all this.
Thanks, guys, yeah.
And then, and, and I'll, I'll send an email to the, the group, our group, the board members, and we'll, we'll figure out next steps, how we wanna play it. Thank you for, thank you, Liz, for clarifying that. On a, a somewhat lighter note, I see there is a 2023 East End Planning Conference happening in Riverhead. And it turns out that the, what is it, the American Planning Association Long Island Section Treasurer is in our midst here. Bravo. So you, you're, you're, I got this from, from Doris.
Yeah.
So there is a conference forum coming up in what, a month, on what is it? It's, uh, March 30. And if we, if you were to go, you, uh, you would, you would get.
Four hours of.
Four hours of credits.
Yeah, so there's a walking tour, and that's what's it, I believe it's 1:30.
Yep.
At 2:30, and that's downtown Riverhead, and and then from there, you would walk over to the Hyatt, where this conference center next to the aquarium. And there will be two panel discussions. One is related to kind of comparing a master development in Glencoe to a master development that is about to occur in Riverhead. They're both, they both retained RXR, achieving with RXR as a master developer. And so Glencoe has had a great success story with Bourbon's Point redevelopment. And RXR is now coming to Riverhead. You know, the train station is a property that they're gonna refill. And they also are looking at that as components of the whole downtown. So it's kind of cool how they're bringing these people together.
Yeah.
The mayor of the city will be there, and John Thomas, who is the CBA director, and Jeff Murphy, who works with the building department. And then there's RXR and George Green presenting. And then there's dinner. It's $25.
Dinner.
For everyone. It's $25. Coffee and donuts when you get there, no brownies. And, and then the second session has to do with how, how development gets paid for, how does it work out? Because, you know, there's always the perception that, you know, there's the developer that's getting IDA grants and so forth. All this kind of money, and, you know, are they walking away with each profit? And it's important for people to understand how, you know, how all this stuff gets canceled out when you want good development and investment. You know, how's that happen? And so.
This is good.
Fifty people, Suffolk County, Sarah Lansdale, planning director will be there, Karen Longworth from New York State Development Council, so.
Do you mean that there's gonna be a future, a new town square in Riverhead? Is that part of the plan?
Yes, they got money to buy properties across from Suffolk Theater.
Oh.
And they have a visitor of the waterfront now, whereas it used to go down Main Street, not through the water.
This is a amazing turn of events. It's taken a long time, right? Because it was hollowed out by Route 58 suburban development. And it was so sad for so long. And I know that there's been major investments gone in in the last 20 years, including, I didn't even realize it because of the pandemic, but the two new apartment mixed-use buildings that are kind of in parallel with each other. They're substantial and impressive, and now with multiple projects, that some of which I just heard of, now Town Square, I didn't know about that. I did know about the train station, but this is awesome for Riverhead, for, for county.
Well, I hope, I hope you can make that.
Of course.
We have, uh, we can provide such kids for the village for the four hours of training, you can go to the walking tour. So.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it.
So this will be circulated?
It was, into your email.
To my email's dead, because I, I haven't been fluidized.
And there's a link of our CBA Long Island website to register through Eventbrite, so you can just pay.
That's the link right here.
$25 and.
Thank you.
You'll be on the list.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Or if you wanna bring a check, just let me know.
No, I'll, I'll go. I got it.
The thing that convinced me was the dinner. That's, that's. I just wanna mention that. That's, that's good. Is there anything else, everybody? If we're good to go, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Okay, seconded. All of us in favor? Bravo. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
Have a good evening. Bye, bye, Kay.
I, I would like to, this is off the record, right?
Yeah.
It's over. I, I would just like to compliment you.